Haven't seen any emails or text message or anything from Commissioner Shelman, so I'm just gonna...
Well, hopefully she wouldn't email if that wouldn't work.
Oh, yeah, this is true. But no text messages, so I'm gonna hope she's just running a little behind now. But if we get going, if we get going, we'll...
Yeah, yeah, we should.
Good morning, everybody. It's Monday, May 20th, 2024. If you have standing to answer for the question, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have, we have an owl today. It's working. We don't have, since this is a special session, we don't have minutes to approve. And during the next regular session, we'll approve these minutes.
Okay.
So that would take us in the agenda to opportunity for public comment. Anybody like to address the court?
At the present time, I'm just here to observe.
Okay.
But I say this, I would point out, though, that if something comes up, I would like to reserve the opportunity to possibly...
Well, I always encourage conversation. We try to, try to have that conversation, two-way conversation in all of our activities. It's just that during actual court sessions, we don't want to get into too much of a debate, so.
Okay.
So that would take us to county court discussion.
Late items.
Late items, okay.
I just want to mention that I was proofreading the verifying budget committee minutes. And there are certain times in the minutes where it says that you, the judge, was, that that would be something that needed be decided. And so if you have any of those on your mind besides this one discussion item that a court needs to figure out so that the budget committee won't stall the budget stuff, then please let's do them today because our schedules are really tight for the next month, probably, I can tell you. And I certainly wouldn't want to...
The only things that I have that I know we're working on still is the deflection funds to the DA's office and the moving of the grant funds in to its own fund for the fairgrounds, finalizing that for, we've got, I think, Treasury Heaney has got all of the... Keep moving that. Let me get these people.
And Fair Event Center, are we gonna set the rate for the admin policy? Is that something for today?
I mean, you know, if there's anything else that's got court needs to do in order for the budget finalization to proceed, that would be welcome. Yes, the rate, the administrative rate for the fairgrounds and event center is a topic that we need to determine today. So as a late item, add that as E. Administering rate.
I guess just for the record, can we establish what today's date is?
Yeah, I said at the beginning, May 20th.
And so you needed to have deflection as a topic today?
No, I don't, we don't need to have it as a topic. It's just as far as the issues that I'm dealing with as the budget officer to get things put together for the budget, that's one of them that I still have to discuss with the DA and get those items built out in the budget.
And I would recommend unless, I mean, I would recommend just Steve and then expand line for this time and rather than, unless he's got a plan that the county court wants to look at. Again, that you'd have to look at it if that was more than that.
I have a meeting scheduled with the district attorney on the 29th. And hopefully we'll be able to parent out all those issues. Both the CAMI, the MOCA, and the criminal fines assessment, those three budgets.
Right. And we set another budget board meeting for the fourth, right?
Yes.
And will the fourth now be the month for approval?
Yes.
Okay.
And I see I had a postie on my agenda here that says biomass. Was there topics or something that we needed to add for biomass?
Just to see if you want me to slip in there for the meeting tomorrow. We have a board.
Oh, 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 yes, okay. Thank you for reminding me of that. So then another late item that I would like to put on here then is for the biomass board, we have a vacant seat from the county. And I have struggled with who from the county to appoint to that position. Everybody's busy. Everybody has a lot going on. We have issues with another court member being on there with quorum. So that's not gonna work. And I wanted to keep the position at the level of decision-making because it's a vote.
So we'll put it as an item for today?
Yes, I'd like, I have a, I have a suggestion for it.
Okay.
Quick question, though, is, are we talking about the biomass, the heating unit for this place?
It's the High Desert Biomass Cooperative, I think is the full, at least, term.
School District Three in the county, right?
That is, that system's been down now for a while, I think.
No, it's been up.
Oh, has it?
Yeah.
It goes down for day or two.
It's had some rocky times this season, this season, but...
Okay, so the admin rate, biomass, we are not going to talk about deflection, you say?
No, that's, I mean, that's not, it's just a structure. All we need to do is figure out, I need to put it together in the budget to... So that we can present, finalize the DA's budget.
Holly, do you happen to remember anything as you were taking the minutes that got kind of kicked back to, oh, well, the court's gotta look at that?
No.
Okay. Well, I knew we need to do the admin rate, so I just trying to get everything done since our county court meeting, next formal one is not, she's allowed the budget meetings. Good job.
All right, Commissioner Shelman, we just taken care of a little bit of free business. We did add to agenda items as late items, fairgrounds, event center, administrative rate, and the bio, the High Desert Biomass Cooperative, county's vacant board seat. I've got a suggestion for that, and we have a meeting tomorrow, so before the meeting tomorrow, I figured to just put it on here today. Did you have any late items?
No, the project's famous one that I couldn't remember if we'd put on the original agenda, so I'm glad that that was added. So you can finalize the budget.
So discussion items, first off the bat then. Well, I guess first off, I mean, as for the agenda, it's just priority. My, my priority from the very get-go was and has been is to rebuild our operating reserve. So in doing this year's budget, I plugged in $200,000 in that line right off the bat and budgeted everything else around it. That was my priority. I know Commissioner Dorro, you had submitted a letter at the beginning of the, of the budget cycle with several topics, strategic financial planning, overall strategic or strategic fiscal analysis, strategic planning, professional grant writing, administrative position.
Right, I think we should talk about each of them and see if any of them emerges. The one, I'd like it to be, we could do two or three, but at least something we can move forward with this year.
And then, so, so that's kind of, those are my prior, are my priority, basically, is the, is the operating reserve. And then those items are yours, Commissioner Shelman. Do you have any priorities that you'd like to discuss?
A quite a bit of what Commissioner Dorro had listed was also in line with what some of our priorities were. Some of them were addressed during the budget, such as trying to get 911 fully staffed so that we can stabilize that department. That was able to occur so far, and so I think that, you know, when we look at things that were cut from the budget, you know, after you look at the first analysis of it, you know, and then you said you want to put some of that money back in. And so it's, it's kind of just trying to look at the overall picture of how do we meet some of these priorities? You know, those maintenance lines that were cut, how do we make sure that we leave enough funds in there to be secure? And what is that number that we're comfortable with? As well as then you have just the things that didn't make it in the budget, such as the assistance for HR and the treasury that, as we've discussed during the contract work sessions that we had, that we do feel like HR does need some additional help, whether that be contracting out some additional HR services in order to try to stabilize that with this amount of employees and the complicated process that HR has to go through with the changing laws constantly. I do think that we need to look at trying to figure out how we manage that so you don't drown one employee in that position. And so, you know, that would be an additional one that I know wasn't necessarily part of the budget at all. It was one that was kind of struck at the beginning from what I understood.
I had, I had built in that position. And then, we'll go ahead and finish, because I'm gonna give a little, a little background just for...
Well, and, and, you know, I don't think that we really discussed, if we were to do something like that position, what would it work like? You know, we needed to have some further discussion of what would assistance for HR and potentially contracting out pieces of that look like? Because that was part of our work session discussions with contracting. You know, and so I know that we haven't really dove into that at all into details and what that number would actually need to be.
It was pretty expensive.
It, which I would assume, but it depends on how we go about it. Are there pieces of it that could be contracted out versus a full-blown, you know, turn it all over to a contracting service? Because there, you know, from what we're having indicated from that staff, that there are just more things than one person can ever get to and do properly, which then we hear grumblings from other staff because needs aren't being met. And that is an essential role for keeping employees in a good way.
And it's always concerned me that we just have one person that can do payroll.
Yeah, me too, absolutely. And that was with that emphasis that I had put in that position initially at the beginning of this budget cycle was that if anything happens to our treasurer or our HR position, we're gonna be struggling.
Yeah, we aren't, we aren't set up for any cross-training to help satisfy that need down the road.
I think that that's very important. I think those are the kind of things we need to shop around. And it's gonna take a little time to get some estimates and see some different models for consideration. But we should do it early after the budget is passed. I don't think we necessarily budget this year on that. But I just like the wage and pay scale that, that you contracted for now that's gonna happen. I mean, these things need to happen as soon as possible in the new fiscal year so that by the time we're budgeting next year, we can, we can see what we can do. But let me finish, let me finish.
The only other thing, if I can get my transpot back.
Shoot. Were any of them those?
Yeah, the payroll support, but you had grant writing, the administrative position. Oh, the other thing was going to be, was looking at the 37.5 hours that's typically been the hours for those that work within the courthouse for the county. From what I understood, that was bumped to a 40-hour work week, or did that happen? I, I'm not sure where, where that settled, and so I was just meaning kind of...
That was in the initial, my initial, my very initial budget when I put it there. Well, we came up to $440,000 in the, in the red. I had looked at doing that amongst all departments, and then obviously it was something I didn't push through because I had to find those areas.
Well, I was assuming as much, but then I'm like, I guess I never clarified that, and so I was wanting to understand.
There are certain departments, the sheriff's offices at 40-hour, they're 40-hour employees. The health clinic, public health is 40 hours. We did bump the building department to 40-hour work, work week. Everything else is still 37 and a half.
Okay.
But it is something that down the road, some of it we may have to do through attrition as people maybe leave their positions, or if we just decide that how the current county's gonna be a 40, but it was expensive. It, it did equate to quite a bit of cost, so I took it, took it out.
So that has...
Yeah. That, we played with, we played with insurance, you know, maybe being able to put some more in HSAs. That was part of that number. We played with premiums, being paid more of the employee premium. And, and again, that's all those things together, along with the department's proposed budgets for their wish list, so to speak. That's what put us at the $440,000. So as a little bit of background for the record, during the budget preparation timeframe, we had built those items in. And I had pretty much put in what the departments wanted, like I said, and then it come out at $440,000 in the red. Initially, immediately, I went in and cut the, the position, the assistant position, because it's not on the books now. So it was something that was easily cut. I trimmed back a lot of the maintenance budget items. We took out the extra HSA funds. We took out the extra insurance premium funds. We took out all those things that we tried to add and, and just see where the number, you don't know until you put them in there and see where the numbers are at. But I took out all those things that we were potentially, hopefully, trying to do for our staff. But it just, it wasn't in, wasn't in the cards. And that brought us down to, I want to say the second reading was around $340,000 in the red still. And then after that, I had to go back in, and I had previously put a limit on step increases of no one who had received a step increase from 2023 and, and sooner, wouldn't be eligible. And I had to go back and make that nobody from 2022 to the current. So that would mean anybody who hadn't received a step increase from '21 previous would be eligible. And there were a few people that haven't had step increases since like 2017 and whatnot, so there were a few that were behind on. But in order to again, to trim that back and, and keep it within what our budget limits were, I had to set another, another benchmark or idea of nothing prior to, or nothing after this period. So, so that, and we finally got it down to zero. Insurance, our liability insurance, I had estimated, well, they told us about 20% more this year. And our health insurance did, and that dental did go up a little bit. We were initially budgeting at 5.5% on both of those, and they both ended up coming in at, I think, 3.3%. So it wasn't as much as what we were initially told, but they still a little bit higher. Our liability insurance, we were expecting it to be around 20% higher. And that's two factors because of just industry standards, costs going up, and also because of claims from the county could cause our rates to go up. That didn't end up coming back as high as that either. And then in looking at the actual costs over the last couple of years for insurance, and then when we finally got the, the, the preliminary statement of what our liability insurance was gonna be, that was overestimated by quite a bit. So I cut that out, trimmed it down. Still, I think I've still got maybe about $15,000 excess in that line just to cover any unexpected overages or whatever for insurance. But that cut back and got us a lot of money back as well, or back usable.
Knowing your actual numbers.
Yeah, yeah. So that helped us get down to a zero budget. And then with a couple of other things that have come up in the last several weeks, right now, I'm back to looking at about an $82,000 deficit that I have got to trim out. Some of the stuff that I have rebuilt, that was some public safety issues, or issues, but wants, needs, vehicles, some of the maintenance stuff that I had rebuilt, and then, and then it built right back up again to $82,000 in the red. So some of those I'm gonna have to take back out again and try to get down. So right now, currently, those budgets that I've worked with, my, the bottom line and the general fund is about $82,000 in the red.
Which things, did you just say you would have to take out again?
Some of the maintenance funds that I had rebuilt, because I stripped those down to, what were they, $25,000, $30,000 is what I had, had reduced them down to. And I built them back up, each one of them, there's two different maintenance line items. And I had built each one of them back up to 40,000. I believe I have to pull that look exactly, I don't remember, but I want to say 40,000 is what I rebuilt those to. So there's another 20,000 there that we can read, that I can pull back out again.
Did you say, did you say, at the other day at the budget meeting, the potential for about $120,000 related to a grant that was not managed well, emergency management related? From the previous...
About, yes, did I get that budget?
If that, if that...
Tentatively, yes. And that was, yes, some grant funds for, for the repeater work that's going on, the radio repeater work that's going on. And the initial estimate was $120,000. But the 911 supervisor has been going through and scouring all the bills that have been paid, the total that's been paid out and what's remaining. And last I heard, they have that down to 90,000. I don't know where they're at with that, if they're still finding more receipts and more.
So whatever that amount is, you tentatively have, where would be full from that if we had?
Well, if we weren't able to, I think currently, right now, there's $80,000 or $90,000 in a contingency line that might have to be realigned.
And that was in 911 funds?
No, that one was, actually, those funds could be paid right out of, out of 911. They're beginning fund balances.
I thought that's what the conversation is.
I just wanted my... Yes, it was, and, and they had talked about potentially going to the cities of Burns and Hines and EMS.
They received some of the items that were from that grant.
Yeah, yeah, and maybe getting recouping part of that cost from them. But the, the 911 beginning fund balance is around 700 and something thousand dollars.
Just wanted to be clear, that was something that was on my mind.
But as far as other funds, if, you know, it just depends on how deep I have the slash to get that 82,000 back to zero. I do have some money in an extended, in a contingency line that I could go after a little bit. I hate to do that, because that's, we don't have a contingency.
Well, from my point of view, I totally support trying to rebuild our reserve every year for a while, because... But the main thing I would like to do this year, if we can, that if we're already 82,000, we've got to look to where, but I don't think we should keep waiting. I think we need a professional, objective, financial strategic plan. An entity to, to know how municipalities and county governments tend to work, look at our revenues, look at our projected revenues, look at our payroll, look at our obligations, et cetera. And give us some information, such as usually for government of your size, payroll is X percent between this and this percent of your budget, yours is this, that's rather high, be thinking about that. Here are some things you aren't doing that some governments do, whatever, whatever we can do, because as tight as we're getting on everything and you know, you'll be getting away, wage and pay scale done, you know, there aren't too many other places besides personnel services seems like at this time, unless we get some more revenue that, that hasn't been identified yet. But even then, a permanent, something permanent, we don't have to chase every year. I just want us to be well-educated as we do some of the planning year to year and looking five years ahead or whatever, so that we can be very professional about how we go about it if we have to make some hard decisions.
And I, I agree. I saw the team early on, even before taking office, for some kind of strategic plan that, that we could use to follow. And, and they started, you know, once you have the planning laid out for you and you refer to that document or that plan in, in how you want to grow, where you want to grow, what initiatives you want to pursue, whatever, the research is already done for you and the plan, and as long as we stick to the plan on those topics, it, it helps guide us where we, where we need to be. So, so I'm all in favor of, of the strategic planning part of it, financial analysis part of it, and maybe we could get both of those done in a combined type of a...
That'd be great if we could.
Type of a document or a process.
But if we would love that.
So those are both one-time items that would cost one time. The other items in your list of professional grant writing, management services, and administrative position. Grant writing has the potential, if there's enough grants out there for them to go after all the time, has the potential to make their salary in the administrative portion of a grant. And you can just, but you need to seed that position initially, so there's labor costs on the front end. And hopefully, as time goes on, they can fund themselves just by the administrative portion that you take out of a grant. But again, it takes, it takes money to start it.
Do you know any counties that already are following that type of model, or they're now, it's now so?
I don't, I'd have to send them, I'd have to send a message out to the administrators and find out, you know, what they've got. And, and there are grant writing services out there, so if we specifically had a grant that we wanted to go for, we could contract with a grant writing service to do that.
And I don't know if Biz Oregon or Regional Solutions or any of those folks ever provide that type of financial grant in order for us to get some of the stuff done or not. I've never asked them for that.
Some sort of a TA.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, well, they do.
We don't ask for a lot from them, and, and they're very, they, they try to help us. They do help us in some, in ways that aren't always just county.
And some of their grant funding is, is, are loans, not grants. So I have to be careful about that, and, and, I mean, yeah, they give you the money upfront, but you have to pay it back. So, you know, if, if you can't afford...
How about GEO DC? I, I've only worked with them on a couple of things.
They will help with grant writing services and, and monitoring too. Some of the USDA grant stuff that they'll help us with. Because, well, USDA grants, the rural community development grants are very tedious, have a lot of moving parts and a lot of paperwork that goes along with them.
Well, I guess getting back to it, just, yes, I believe we need some type of grant writing, professional grant writing services and support, but I don't know what that looks like. And it's not quite as high a priority for me as the fiscal strategic planning. To me, if we're gonna get the wage and pay scale done, which is very important, and, and we can do the fiscal analysis and or strategic plan. I, those are my priorities.
Yeah.
I really think we need a strategic plan though to be in place so that you know what grants you're trying to pursue.
And, and out of the strategic plan would come probably a recommendation of some type of grant writing support from there. But yeah, I, so these were all things that weren't necessarily prioritized, just. So I just wanted to.
I, I think though, with the, some of the remaining ARPA funds, especially where it's a one-time it would be very appropriate to pursue that, so that then you would know what type of grant writing services you're actually uh, you know, really in need of, uh, through that analysis.
That's where I think it should come from. It's American, um, Rescue Plan, and this will help us move forward since COVID anyway, so.
Things are different. Going in that direction. So taking into consideration that these other two positions are gonna cause payroll, long-term costs. The other, but the strategic planning is a one-time cost, and, and we can take that from our behalf.
And it's already budgeted to do so, so it's not something that.
We have appropriated, we have a line appropriated for, for us to access it, yes.
Do you, Commissioner Darrell, have you looked into any um, potential costs for that?
No, I have a few names that, but I have not. Um, they were not easily reached at the time when I had time to be looking into it, and I hadn't heard for sure that we are all wanting to do it. Um, I can share those if you want. I mean, I, maybe another um, discussion for what we, a little bit more of what we're talking about. But I, I did call AOC early on. They said, we don't do that, we don't recommend, which, that's a change from maybe five years ago. They said, we get involved in that, so.
It, it would determine, it would depend on the cost of what, you know, what, what that would look like as far as cost. If it's between, what is it, twenty-four thousand dollars now and a hundred and twenty-four thousand, something like that, then it's an intermediate um, procurement. And you don't have to do a full-blown RFP, you can go direct solicitations and get results or get uh,
I would assume it would be under the ultimate number, but that, you know.
But it would be easier for us to contract and procure that, at that dollar amount level. Um, versus having to go out with an RFP.
I, I guess I'm, I could say I do not know how much it would cost. I was just thinking about that, and I was thinking possibly cost this much, it seems like it would, but I don't know, I haven't asked, I haven't.
Probably depend on how detailed your.
Well, our, our, like, we're, our estimate for the, for the um, class and comp study, um, came in at twenty-one thousand dollars. With LCOG, which who were a partner, were a member of, paying annual dues with them, so that helped the cost on that. On that, obviously. Um, but some of the other ones were, were pretty expensive. So I would imagine that this kind of a strategic plan, you could figure on probably between fifty to eighty thousand dollars, just depends on how long it's gonna take them.
They might also be the entity to do this strategic slash.
Maybe, they would be, it would be.
I didn't follow them.
We're talking to, um, they're pretty busy. Uh, like, I, I signed, I signed the contract for our class and comp about a month ago. And even, but between the time that took them to get their contract to us was about a month, so they're, they're pretty busy with projects. But they've done a lot of other counties studies, those same studies, so. And I haven't heard anything from the other administrators as far as performance-wise negativity, so. So, um, I would say that if you wanna make sure that we build it into the budget, I'll make sure, look at the, the uh, ARPA funds. Um, and that our expense line that we have for that would be okay if we need to create some other kind of an expense line or whatever, but I'll make sure that that's okay for those, for that purpose, to pay that out for those kind of expenditures. Uh, it might be just fine the way it is, but I'll double check, is it a lot? And pursue, uh, assume that it was, and then after the budget's approved and adopted, we shouldn't have done something different. So I'll make sure that that's good. Um, and then, and then the, the professional grant writing and the administrative position. Um, I, I'm in favor of an, an administrator, a county administrator, I really am. I just, we, as I've mentioned several, multiple times, we just can't afford it.
Well, when I've seen that the not estimated, but when people have shared emails with us over the last year, some of the salaries that tend to be for that, you know, it is very high. And they should get benefits and everything, so I don't, you're the one that knows where the money is and isn't, and I agree, it would be nice to have an administrator. And maybe I.
I think it's, we're gonna have to realign some of our FTE to meet that goal is the only way that you will get there. It will take cutting of other positions in order to fund that position, but I think long-term it will be a cost savings to the county as we deal with as you've been thrown into this position. Things that, you know, I'm sure you wish you had additional training and background to be able to navigate. Have to shove on your plate, and then it leaves us short a commissioner, you know, really in this, you know, governing body situation, because if you're always uh, so busy just doing those administrative duties, then there's no room for other things. And I mean, the, the.
Our county judge position as it is, in my opinion, is like a two-point-two FTE. Your, you, your predecessors, whoever, you know, but particularly the more recent ones filling the, that job. The plate is so full.
That's also why we had a budget crisis, to be honest. When you overfill the plate, it's easy to stub a toe. And, you know, I think it was a direct correlation to that, honestly, you know. Yeah, well, you don't want things like that to happen in the future, and so you can't overload someone to the point where there's no way to accomplish all the things that are necessary.
I remember back when, uh, two judges ago, and when the county courtroom was in there and he worked off the big table. Yes, it's, it's, that was like this all the time, and the administrative assistant really uh, scheduled who could go in to see him, and, and I, I often wondered how, how does that work, you know? Um, because is just gross.
Yeah, my calendar, well, last week, that was a day last week, I was triple booked on meetings. Uh, tomorrow, there's a, there's a pan slot tomorrow that I'm triple booked on. Um, one of them, I really can, I can get out of one of them, but there's two others that I really need to be at tomorrow, and I don't know, as of Monday, I don't know how I'm gonna do it.
Well, I, I saw what, um, you know, you had to, um, send out that email, uh, to Jessica Keys, you know, I mean, you couldn't, yeah, it's just hard.
Yeah, that was one of them I was triple booked on last week. So, so it is, I mean, there, there are days that a- and that's fine, I'm not, I'm not complaining in any way, shape or form, it just boils down to capacity. And, and being able to, to do the work that we need to do for the county, to get things done and make it better.
Just even with state reporting requirements and trying to stay up with some of that. You know, knowing what's coming down, being able to engage more legislative processes to do affect this at this level. And there's just a lot to it. And so I, I do think that we're gonna have to work within our current departments and, and really look at some FTE capacity being shifted to accommodate that role.
And I do too, I, I mean, I don't know exactly what it looks like, but.
Without shifting FTE alignment to where we really have that essential need, you know, to me, it's not optional anymore. Um, with the amount of things that are required. And then even, you know, as I discussed here, being able to have a a non-quorum issue with that position would be very helpful. And it is, it is really challenging, cause there's a lot of things that we should be following up with our county administrator on that creates a quorum issue that nobody should be, no elected official should be put in that position. In Harney County, we're still doing that. To the.
I, I agree with the, the quorum issue discussion-wise, being able to conduct business. I, I agree that is a hindrance and it is a, an issue. Um, but I have concerns about an administrative position that doesn't have defined uh, chain of command.
Oh, it would have.
That, that could create issues in and of itself amongst this body, whoever's here in years to come. But if the, if the, the chain of command is not outlined or specific enough, that there's you're gonna have too many people telling the person what to do, is my, is my concern.
No, and I think that that, that's a reality, you know, that that has to be guarded per se. Um, that it's a, a joint employee of the governing body, and that it needs to have, but those updates, everything, just, and I'm not talking about, you know, trying to run someone from the background, I'm talking about just general follow-up. That would make the flow and function of our roles, as well as that will happen more seamlessly. Would make things much easier to just conduct business and make sure that things are being done in timely manners and, and that we're there's a reason why so many counties do engage with that. They all have different struggles. It's gonna still take whoever's sitting in these seats to behave themselves essentially with that position and make sure that they're giving them the latitude to do their job, without trying to intervene with their job.
Sure. I'm sorry, cut you off there for a second.
Nothing.
Okay. So, um, agenda-wise, um, we've got, I think we can fund the strategic analysis, financial analysis and strategic planning elements here. Um, the professional grant writing, the administrative position, and even down a little bit, as we just mentioned, um, an administrative assistant, uh, uh, to payroll and, and treasurer. Are those something, things that we really want payroll and, uh, position, new petition, new positions, new FTE that we really wanna pursue in this budget cycle, or, or something that we really need to look at? Yeah, hold our breath and hope for the best.
Does anyone ever help her, even if they're not, it's not their job?
Treasurer has some with Tammy, some that's built in, but it's, it's very specific in nature.
It's just a part of the process, the AP process, somebody that's a part of it.
No one, you know, and that's, that's the really, really big challenge with that, because our personal needs don't ever go down. And then the change in law and just trying to keep current with, with all that and how that affects our employees and making sure.
I think that should be part of the strategic plan. Let's get that so that that's confirmed, that's, that we've got it in a plan, that these are priority positions and functions that, that need to be changed, changed to be healthy as government and, and responsible. Um, and, and go from there. I mean, if, if you had to hire somebody because it, it was becoming really problematic this coming year, where would you not, not hire a person as a full-time employee, but where would you?
That plan will give us that roadmap for that, okay, we've identified that this position is, is, is critical. That, that it's priority. Over the year, which it won't be well, potentially this, this year, this coming budget year. Um, if we have vacancies, then those vacancies have to be reviewed with that planning in mind. And determine whether we're gonna fill those vacancies or leave them open, so that it's come the next budget cycle when we have, when we're gonna add a position, we have funds there to do it. So, so that roadmap, that strategic plan, will start paying dividends right off the bat. And will help assess positions as they become vacant, as to whether or not we refill them or not. Is that?
I, I think that we're gonna have to really be careful, because I, I just know in our contract discussions that the workload was becoming unsustainable with the HR position. And we were very concerned about the burnout of that. And so I think that that is something that has to rise to a priority level as we finish some of these budget meetings and potentially realign some FTE that we currently have in other departments to meet that need.
Okay, so, so that one, a- at least that is the
Hunting with that. It's, it's been known, it's, it's been communicated to us from frustrations with staff as well as that position. And that, that frustration doesn't go away because the workload continues to overwhelm.
That's just, that was my question, basically. Is it something we wanna address and need to address this budget cycle, or the next, next budget cycle?
I, I think we have to take steps now on that one.
And what, what steps would you recommend for the budgeting purpose?
Well, as we talked about putting some, um, departments back into our agenda for the budget meetings, I do believe that there's some FTE within the library. When I look at other departments and how many FTE are within that department, that could come out of that department and realign to other essential needs that we do have. We do have to pare down some FTE over there in that department. Those are services that are a, a want, and we want to serve the community in that capacity. But when we have this level of need over here, we have to take some of that FTE and pull over to where we really are desperately in, in need of these essential duties.
A realignment of priorities.
Is there any way to do that without doing any department realignment right now? Until we've got that financial analysis done. Um, and in the meantime, do we have funds anywhere that can pay for, like, I don't know if there are some professional HR or payroll services that can be?
Uh, pay, HR payroll services and the research that I did. Um, number one, they all basically said you have to have a client contact here. So you can't, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be a matter of doing away with our HR here and then having a, a remote entity.
Right. Some people contract out their payroll, for instance, that would be easier. I'm thinking in theory than your HR. You mean, your HR's gotta be servicing people in a lot of different ways. And even though payroll has a lot of, you know, uh, complications, but they have rules and professionals, you know, whether it's CPA outfit or whatever, someone that does do payroll services. I, I don't know.
First remove payroll from that position and, and strictly contract out your payroll, that is a typical thing that a lot of entities do.
With roughly a hundred and twenty employees, uh, I think that, that contract out is gonna be by equipment, probably what you would pay for an actual employee. So you might save, you might save a moment by contracting, because you're not paying the purse side of things, some of the benefits you're not paying. But in the long run, I think you're gonna, it's gonna be pretty close to a wash.
Well, it'd be interesting to know, um, too, with, with our current problem with that, without having the backup. If you have an entity that does payroll, that you have multiple staffing positions to do that internally, and so it would build in that cross-training for, you know, that we lack with, with payroll.
I, when I saw it switch at school district three back in like the two thousand thirteen-ish timeframe or from this, at the time, the school business manager did that, and then it was kinda like, and it was overwhelming things. Um, and they contracted with an E S D, an amount of E S D at the time, I don't know if they still do. And they had a whole team who, who did it for various school districts. They knew the school stuff really well, and it, it just, the errors, the challenges, the explanations, the corrections were invisible to us after that. And, and they, you know, um, were insured, you know, uh, as far as their own errors, you know, so. I don't know, you're affiliated with school districts, so you might know how that stuff rolls for them, and there's outfits that do that. I don't know how much it costs, but what I liked about it at the time was.
Most of them don't do it internally and.
They, they, they got it right, they did it. Yes, it costs money, but you didn't, you weren't adding employees, you had a personal service contract with them.
Most of them contract out though because it's a savings. They, they have few enough employees that it doesn't warrant a new FTE to pay, to, to provide that service, so therefore. So therefore it's cheaper to contract out than it is to bring up somebody.
They had a lot of employees at the time. You know, the school.
Well, the depth of. Employees on the payroll contracting entity side would be an asset to us just because then you don't have one person.
Yeah, they have their own built in. Their own built in uh uh.
Redundancy of.
Yeah, staff that can, somebody's out sick, somebody else can do it, whatever. Yeah, vacancy, somebody takes a new job, you have a vacancy, you have somebody else that can do it. So so contract agency does bring that that benefit on.
Which I think it's something that scares us currently because. We don't. And it's not a, it's not a good place to be.
So um. Yeah, um if if we if we wanna do that this budget cycle, within the couple meetings we have left. I'm gonna have to sit down and really look at departments and see what, see what we can do.
I I do believe it's a need, I mean, I I've known about the need since I came in, um discussed it. It it's a can that cannot continue to be kicked down the road or else we're gonna lose. We're gonna lose people due to, you know, just complete overload, um they've already communicated that to us. And I think it's our duty to address it.
So between now and the next budget meeting, we we figured the strategic um. And fiscal plan, plan uh we can do out of Oracle. And. Should we just ask you to to bring a solution already built into the next budget meeting?
I will look at, see what, see what the options are.
I'd start with our local C P A outfits to see if they provide that first of all, and if they have experience providing that.
Providing the financial.
The the payroll type of ser- I mean payroll.
Well, yeah, I can, I can look into see what payroll contracting will cost at about a hundred and twenty employees.
Do do you, Mr. Schellman, know any um counties that already do that that you?
Counties, uh you know, most of them do. Hire it out from what I've heard from other folks, so I'd have to, you know, circle back around with some specific.
Um the H R network of H R specialists have a pretty good emails. I'll have H R do that and I will send one out uh to the administrators as well and see what to go back.
And just even a phone call to a couple of. Community judges or chairs. If we happen to know that they.
Yeah, I don't, and I don't know off the top of my head, who doesn't, who doesn't.
Because, you know, that that's worth a lot to me is when one of our colleagues from another county says. Oh yeah, we do it this way and we love it.
Yeah.
Or. We keep thinking about it, we haven't done it for this reason, you know.
The feedback that I get from the email will. Will dictate where the phone calls go.
Well, and I think a lot of other counties, as we've looked at their makeup and staffing, they also have um. That depth of staff built in that we tend to lack in this size of county and so, you know, we are in a. A little bit of a different situation than a lot of folks where we just don't have. Redundancy in positions. And um, you know.
We can't afford it.
We've gotta, we've gotta create some uh where it's essential.
Yeah.
Okay, so on the administrative assistant or books, um H R slash treasury assistant position. Um I will research. Payroll options. And um. Just relook at existing F T Es and where we might be able to cut the priorities to realign priorities.
Well, it's, to me, it's not cutting, but it's giving that that position maybe not for change realigned to where we actually are, you know, in need of. These other types of services and so.
And we'll wait on the professional grant writing services until.
The strategic plan is done.
Um so the next. Next uh thing that we need to determine is the Fairgrounds Event Center Administrative Rate. My. My estimate, I looked at. And I have no idea, I'm just ballparking it really, but number of hours for legal support. And I put it initially probably at a hundred hours. And um economic development support, probably about the same thing. Um. Administrative wise, financial support from from the treasurer's office. And I come up with about three hundred hours. Of uh. Of county support from other departments and other. Other entities that we that is paid for by the general fund. Um I multiplied that out. Uh that was something else too though, because I come up with with a figure of about twenty five thousand dollars. Is what my initial. Guess was.
Well, and I originally had proposed around twenty, like I say, it, you know, this project's gonna be essential to get everything that we can out of it. Um obviously, it's gonna take some. Uh additional searching for grants, there's other grants that have been applied for, you know, as we also look at this as an emergency facility. Um. Down the road, you know, and. Not the if, but when situation and so I, you know, I would feel comfortable at twenty five, to be honest. Um twenty would be my preference, but.
My other, my other concern on that though is even when um I had Treasurer Heaney. Um. Print out those administrative costs by by department, by fund um during the last budget meeting. And you look at the, you look at the uh road departments and their normal operating. Budget and their their administrative costs is over a hundred thousand dollars. And that's just their normal operating cost. Now, we have a a fair. Capital project down down there that has a four and a half, five million dollar price tag. And and we have taken some, I believe we took some administrative costs last year and then get around to looking to see exactly what that entail on that portion of it for last year. Um. So with this twenty five thousand, it might be total of around. Forty or something, I'm I'm guessing last, estimating last year that portion of it maybe was around fifteen, I don't know, I I I haven't pulled that. Crunch those numbers, because I have to pull that portion of it out to see how much it was in their overall administrative.
I'm kinda losing your train now, what?
He's saying that some of it's already been achieved within this.
Last year.
And that's where. If we need to know what that number is to know what we actually should put in this budget, because if we're gonna pull forty thousand dollars out of the project. That's that's becomes a challenge to the bottom line of the budget for the project.
My concern, my overall concern in that is just that that we have a department. That we charge a hundred, I think it's a hu- this year it's it's. A hundred thousand dollars, hundred and sixteen thousand, something like that, one sixteen this year. Um. On their normal operating budget administrative cost figures. And we have a project. Then it is a five million dollar tag and we only charge. Fifty thousand dollars or whatever, and I get.
You know, what what the road department does with paving annually and everything, it does make their budget large, which. That's where it becomes a a conversation, do we want to change the administrative rate of that department? Due to the nature of their budget and that that to me is out of the. Out of the conversation of this specific Fairgrounds project.
But it's the same too, because we're trying, at this point right now, we we need to come up with a number for this administrative.
Cause it's all just gonna be a. You know, a suggestion and if Commissioner Schellman can grudgingly accept twenty five. I will support twenty five and.
But are you saying all in for the project considering that we have already pulled some of that? And so that's where I would like to know what's already came out versus what we're going to write into this budget and what does that add up to? Because that's, like you say, the bottom line of a project that we know we're. We're a phase one project, we're hoping to build up. As much as we can while you have that construction crew present. Um and. We don't, we don't wanna harm our own project. Yeah, unintentionally by pulling out more than what was needed to cover that up.
Well, and that's, you know, that's part of the discussion too, the twenty five thousand dollars in this year's budget, is that gonna be the one time? Flat rate that we charge and then we don't charge anymore next year in the next budget? Or or do we? Or or because it's expenses every year, the cost, the cost.
Say phase one, are you saying something that will end by a certain date or just will end when it gets done?
Phase one means that you're building out with this project. Funds that are available. That'll be the end of phase one with the current.
About what year is that supposed to be in your mind?
It'll, it'll be August of twenty twenty five.
Okay. If it were to. But change as a project and become something that goes on beyond then, I think then we would need.
If any of the current grants that are out there will know within this. Initial, you know, like by June, you'll know whether those will be able to be accomplished within phase one as well. Any phase two would be additional outreach to the legislature and other things. But like you say, a phase one is current funds. Projected things that you can put into this project with that amount of money, which will be those initial contractor discussions.
I get, I get.
The budget.
Or or administrative cost policy by taking out the one time. Phrase that I asked to be taken out would mean we can revisit as we need to.
Cause what you do, what you do is when you sit down with those contractors and you say, what can you build me for those? If you then have additional admin costs of another twenty thousand. You just sat down and worked out a hard number with these guys about their building.
Right.
Where does that money come from?
Right.
Because you you can't keep. Adding on.
No, I meant for phase one, I E in twenty twenty five, I'm good with it.
So with potentially. Uh what was. What was charged in administrative costs last year's budget? And with this twenty five thousand dollars, we're looking at probably about one percent. Of a four million dollar, at four million dollars, I know there's more than that, but I just rounded it in four million. Then we're we're taking about a one percent administrative cost is what it comes out to.
I know, but what I'm saying is when we sit down with contractors, work that out, we need to know exactly what is out of the budget.
Then.
For the build and what's in it, and so it it can't be kind of a a kick down the road, maybe we're gonna pull somewhere out down here. We have to know on the front end when we sit down and it'll be very soon. Yes, but we need to know what's already came out. And what's projected to come out right now, so you know exactly what numbers you're utilizing in the project book.
Um I would say any additional funding, I mean, if there's additional asked of the legislature. Of another million or whatever that might look like, that there's, there's gonna be more administrative costs coming with that.
Right. No, but that's where, like I say, if you, if you're able to get additional funds to be more down the road. That's a hope, but we need to know hard numbers when we sit down with contractors and what is on the table put into the project. And that's what we're.
So at this, at this point then, what we're, what we're talking. With that in mind, is this twenty five thousand or whatever number we come up with here today is gonna be the total of administrative costs for this portion of the project. With with what's already been come out and with the twenty five thousand, that's it, there won't be any more administrative costs on this project with what we have right now.
That has to be a known. What, that just has to be a known.
I'm good with it. I mean, I would like, I would like us not to have to do it that way, but I'm good with it.
Yeah. Um. On that one right there, because it the, I would like to do a motion on that one. I would like to have a motion and a vote on that.
I move to. Set the administrative cost fee for the Fairgrounds Event Center Capital Project. As we know it today, what we're calling phase one. Uh at twenty five thousand dollars, which is approximately one percent according to you.
Well, that plus with what's already come out, it's actually less than one percent, because I only figured that out in four minutes, but.
Well, you can change the motion.
No. That's, that's what we're talking about, I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page and it's, it's.
But are you good with your motion?
Just see if there's a second or not.
I'll second.
A motion has been made to set the administrative costs for the Event Center Capital Project. Uh for this year's budget and the remaining uh project. At twenty five thousand dollars and that will encompass um what's already been um. Uh. Realized in the past budget, this year's budget for administrative costs and um. And this current and upcoming budget. Um any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? And hearing none, motion carries. And we'll plug that into the budget. Um the last. Item that I have then, um. I need to, on the admin, on the uh. Payroll and H R. Um whatever, like I said, I will research payroll outsourcing payroll. Um options on that and then look at prioritization on the current F T E. Uh to potentially be able to fill that position this year. Um the last item that I have is um as our. Membership or our partnership with the the school district on the biomass, the High Desert Biomass Cooperative. We have two seats on that board, it's five person board and we have two seats on representing the county. We had an issue or or not issue, but there's a conflict with having another. Uh commissioner on there with myself. In creating the quorum. Um I've struggled with trying to figure out exactly who to try and facilitate uh facilitate that need, that seat, uh nominate for that seat. Um. It it needs to be somebody that's that's in tune with what's going on with the budget, that's that or with the county. That can act on the county's behalf, if if I'm not there and there's a vote. Then that person has to be able to represent the county and 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 cast that vote. Um. So. Other elected officials I went through in my mind, but everybody's, everybody's capacity is is short. Um I had thought about maybe just a an outside person from outside the county that might be a a financial related type of a uh profession. But again, everybody's busy, everybody's, it's hard to find. So. With all that in mind and with needing to fill that seat, um so that that board can function if somebody's gone right now. I believe that there's another person that they're gonna nominate tomorrow for one of the other empty seats, there's two empty seats right now. But so that that work can function in the course of other absences, because right now we're we're operating with three people, it's just barely equal. Um I want, and I talk to, and I want to nominate, or my plan is to nominate, but I wanted to have your, your okay or your support on it. Executive Assistant York. To that seat.
I would. Uh based on my observations of Executive Assistant York. I think she would be a good choice.
Thank you. I'm comfortable.
Okay, uh and I'd like to do this just by motion too, since it's representing the county and I will make the motion since I'm. We're almost done, but I would uh make a motion that we nominate Executive Assistant York to fill the county's vacancy. On the High Desert Biomass. Uh Cooperative Board.
I'll second.
A motion has been made and seconded to, are there any further discussion?
No, I think that actually.
No, I've been looking for a way to get involved in the community, I think this is a good first, so I'm happy.
Uh a motion has been made and seconded to uh nominate Executive Assistant York County Employee. As uh to fill the county's vacant seat on the High Desert Biomass Cooperative. And um yeah, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? And hearing none, motion carries.
I do have one comment about something else before we adjourn. We'll wait till, if you wanna call it general deliberation.
Um yeah, that's all I had, even in late items, that we've covered everything that I think we needed to cover. Good conversation, good discussion. Appreciate it. Laura Shores.
This stems from your comment earlier regarding. Our um claims, safety claims, you know, insurance claims and. Party County, when um. C I S, you know, puts out its chart at the A O C Annual Conference, you know, go get our little handouts. Our county has never been good on our safety and our claims. We're not even, we're we're on the low end, we we have a problem, I don't know what that problem is, I don't know what it looks like. I don't know if we lack some safety training or or the supervision isn't there. Or what?
I don't know the nature of the complaints and and if they're all over the map, but.
But, I know, I see Malheur County every year and maybe another county getting there. We got no claims, we, and we always have, not just a couple of claims, but we have over the years, we have a lot of claims. So, I'd like to hear more and find out how we can help be part of the solution, not just cause we wanna have a good claims record. Cause we wanna um be responsible for safety and, and good practices and of course save money.
Yeah, and the award is last for priority. I, I can care less about the award.
Right.
Care about is, is employee safety. It does, but, but ultimately the priority is, is employee safety, period, and, and, and property. You know, lack of them or less damage to our property than we own. Structures or, or vehicles or whatever. Um, so we've had this conversation um. Already and what?
When you say we.
You mean the H R director.
Okay.
She deals heavily with C I S, so that's kinda where the discussion has laid out.
Yeah.
Um, so we've had this discussion already and one of the things that we really identified that we could need or could use again. And then it, you know, it comes down to whether it's a priority position or not. Capacity, everybody is filled up with the jobs that they have, but what we need is a risk manager. How do we, how do we do that? I don't know, so we need a full-time risk manager, but maybe coupled with another role. But it has to be a dedicated role to a position, to a person. Um, to look at what we're doing, how we're doing it. When we have accidents. Why did it happen? What could we have done to, to prevent it? Was there a lack in training? Was there a gap in training? Was there a lack, was there a lack or a gap in supervision?
Um, I, I would recommend before we, of course, that can all be part of our, the strategic plan, see where that'll kind of falls. But first thing is, does C I S provide that information? I'm sure they do, you know, or they'll last you ten years, here's Har- Harney Counties, the claims, the, the nature, the claims, et cetera. And then have the department heads, particularly the key ones, you know. And, and just, and, and some of them may be new and, and fairly new and not even know that this, there's things that go on. And find out if what they say, and C I S would probably provide trainings, right? For being part of our contract with them, and have them come out and give some trainings, but um, a lot of times. The department head role that department heads have in addition to their position as they, they view the work they do. Um, it's never been formalized like Commissioner Schellman said at times, you know, you know. How much training have they had to know? As a department head, you're responsible for the mission of your department. For your, your employees as a result to make sure they're aligned with the H R system for budgeting. For uh supervision of your people to this degree for your department. I mean, whatever, these are just basic things that I don't think maybe happened.
Uh, and some of it they haven't. And some of it very much.
Some of it's in-house, we can.
And some of it, some of it is um, a lack of policy within the county.
But even at department head meetings, you know, at least raise, have it be agenda item for introductory and then. Figure it out from there. Uh, a risk manager might be, might be needed, I don't know, but there's other stuff we can do with no cost. Get C I S to provide training and, and have our own department heads hear from, you know, you as the administrator. Um. How it, how it ought to be, whether we have a written policy or not. I mean, I, I don't too, think too many of them. If they say, well, the supervision piece can't be done in my department because blah, 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 all right, for that department, but. I don't know the nature of the claims, so I'm, I'm just kind of imagining in my mind what some of them might be.
Kinda hard.
Um, yeah, I, I can definitely get it, well, every claim's in the binder in there, I can go through basically, or we could go through and do a spreadsheet.
Absolutely, but I guess C I S can print, send it to you, I mean, sure they can.
Oh, we could, uh, just a, a, a printout of our claims, claims over the last couple of years. Um.
As they've always given us a, a piece of paper at the conference of a by chart with our types of claims and stuff, so I mean, they can get it to you, I'm sure they.
Um, so anyway, that, that is, the, the discussion is there, we've had it, it's a need and we've gotta do something. Um, our, like I said, our, our liability rates went up. Um, our workman's comp rates went up too, um, and that was um. Part of that, you know, just to be transparent, part of that was um, as a result that the uh. The hub was still on our workman's comp claim until this year. And we had them seek out and find their own workman's comp claim or, or insurance. Coverage to, to cover their people. But claims that they had will affect us and our payments to save. For several years to come because of, it takes time for that to kind of drop off to books.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which, uh, to be honest, I was not aware that they were utilizing the county's.
But I'm glad that's already changing because you can't, we can't put in nonprofits.
Yeah.
Like what he claims.
So, one of the things that, that's, that C I S has advised too is that when we get claims, we need to really scrutinize them. And decide whether we wanna turn them in or not, cause we have a five thousand dollar deductible. And if it's a four thousand dollar claim. Pay it all anyway, but it goes on your, it goes on your record as having a claim. Whether we pay the deductible, it's four thousand dollars, we're gonna pay the full thing anyway. So why report it to the insurance? Keep it off your, keep it off of your report.
So, does that fall on the initiator to make that call? Like, I mean, how do you perceive that?
For the most part, it comes across my.
And they could communicate it to you in a certain manner to where you could make that decision prior to being, to do it officially, like. How, how?
There does, there does need to be some improved communication on that part, so that uh the department doesn't go direct to. Um, our insurer, our agent can file it. Um, a lot of times they though, even if they do, a lot of times our agent will circle back around with us.
For official final.
Yeah, say, do you really wanna, do you really wanna make this claim? Cause it's forty five hundred dollars, you know, et cetera. You know, in some cases, if it's fifty five hundred dollars, do you file a claim just so you don't have to pay five hundred dollars?
Yeah, you don't want deemed.
Yeah. So those are all.
I just wanted to. Here, both be on that while we work together.
Anything else?
Yeah, as long as you feel comfortable putting in place a good communication chain on that, so that we can be more strategic, pan, that's the MO. Um, that would be, you know, obviously the best case scenario.
It'll, it'll come up in the next, in the next uh staff meeting, department head staff meeting. These kind of things just have come out in the last two or three months and have been consumed with budget and other things, so. The next budget, or the next uh department head meeting will be a topic for that, to make sure that we devise some, either devise or just. Or just build a flat. Say, all claims have to go through me first, with, you know, to decide whether we're gonna file a claim or not before it's filed. And then we have to find funds, maybe in some cases we have to find funds somewhere to be able to pay for it, depending on what it is and. Uh, whether it's a general fund department or a.
Have you set that aside within the budget to accomplish that?
Yeah. So that's, I, I don't have anything else myself.
Nope. Um, I did see Mr. Landborne was here earlier, obviously he left, but um I also seen Director Landborne and join the meeting. Has there been a, a time set, yeah, with that um? Hub board to sit down with the county court?
No.
Cause I was assuming they thought that that might be the intention of this meeting from just their attendance.
Yeah, I don't know, I, um, they haven't. The, the minutes from the last um hub board meet, uh, board meeting. Indicated that uh, yes, we're gonna have those discussions down the road, but again, it's, the budget is passed for the way it is right now. Um, and I intended, my intent was that we would probably start to have those conversations August, September timeframe. I'd like to have, I would like to have any. Any agreements, anything, however we decide to proceed in the future, done before budget season next year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, well before. Yeah, yeah. Um, but I hadn't planned on starting to pursue those until August or September.
I kinda see the whole fall into the winter prior to January first being a time for all of these types of meetings and types of, so that.
I just didn't know they were uh expecting a more immediate meeting at this.
I have not alluded to it, so.
Okay. Well, and as your liaison to that, um, I just would say, keep us comprised. I, I expect you to be the one to set that meeting up and, you know, see that through.
During the most recent budget, uh, or not budget, but board meeting, hub board meeting, I hadn't alluded during that meeting to any.
Immediate.
Any immediate.
That's where I was like, I didn't know if people were expecting something other than that, but.
Just checking.
Right, I think we're.
Anything else? For the. General discussion or anything?
Just hope we get the uh Microsoft thing fixed.
Yeah, it's Microsoft having issues.
We can't get our.
Emails, it's, emails aren't working.
I just checked mine this morning on my phone.
Yeah, I'm still not getting anything, I know.
It started yesterday, last night I checked.
Oh, yeah, I don't have anything since.
Refresh, refresh, refresh.
Oh, no.
Downstairs, I stopped, I mentioned it Ted, then I saw the sheriff came by, then I saw the treasurer came by each saying the same thing, so.
So the laptop data you gave us right before you got here was that it's a, it's a Microsoft issue, it's a Microsoft outlook issue.
Yeah.
So it could be a nationwide thing, not just Harney County, it could be a.
Let me look at my other account.
All right, well, if there's no other business, then we shall stand adjourned at ten twenty two A M.
I think it's just us because my other um Microsoft Outlook account is.
Right, it's our server with them, cause, so it's not like just.